Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
I do.
Okay, come on up to the podium please.
Thank you.
State your name for the record.
I'm Diane Waldron, I'm the Director of Meals on Wheels and I'm here to tell you a really interesting story. As you know, I've come to you before about Meals on Wheels and how we deliver nutritious meal and I've always told you that besides the meal, the home visit is just as important as the meal. And yesterday, one of our drivers, as you know, we delivered to the entire county and we break the county up into seven regions and this particular driver was on Route 7, which is the Back Creek Valley region and she had 23 stops to make. At 11:25, excuse me, 11:40, she called me at my office and said, "Diane, I'm at Ms. Jerry's house and she's not coming to the door." She's been a driver for seven years, so she knows her routes and she knows that Ms. Jerry, who lives alone and is in a wheelchair, would come to the door. But the house was all locked up, all the curtains were drawn, so she was concerned. So she was yelling in there because Ms. Jerry's hard of hearing. So she was yelling and yelling and yelling and she could tell that she was home, but she wasn't coming to the door for some reason. So by this time, because our driver was out there for 15 minutes screaming into the door, two of the neighbors came over who did not have a key to the house. Bottom line is, the driver called me at the office and said, "What should I do? I don't feel like I can leave. I don't feel right about leaving." So I said, "Well, let me call the son and the daughter-in-law." Those were the emergency contacts, which I did. However, they work in Virginia and went to voicemail. So I said, "Call 911," because we didn't have any way to get in and we didn't know the situation. Worst-case scenario, 911 gets there and there's not a problem. However, when the paramedics arrived, they got through a window, because yesterday it was kind of warm and she must have left a window open, and she had fallen the previous night and was on the kitchen floor, had fallen out of the wheelchair. And she was in a bad state. She was really thirsty and dehydrated and was fussing. She needed something to drink and her legs were all cramped up. Anyway, they took care of her. The neighbor stayed, the driver stayed this entire time. Now, this driver had 23 stops, which takes her three hours. She stayed until the paramedics and she knew the neighbors were taking care of her. From there, they took her to the hospital and she's okay. She's been discharged. But I just wanted to show you a really quick story of what really happens with Meals on Wheels. You know, that driver could have saved her life. Bottom line, I want to show you the message I got on the answering machine at 4:45 yesterday.
Received yesterday at 4:45 PM. Hi, this message is for Diane. My name is Caroline Spencer and I just wanted to thank you today for calling 911 for my mother-in-law, Jerry Snyder. My husband's phone having issues and so I was at work. Anyway, I'm on my way to get her now. She's being discharged from the hospital. But again, wanted to say thank you to you guys. I don't know why she has the door locked. It's usually not unless it was from this morning that she never unlocked. But anyway, I just wanted to call and say thank you. Really appreciate your help. All right, goodbye.
So that's just a happy story. It's just, this happens a lot, not every day, but it happens about once a month. So I just wanted to share that with you. So when you do support us, that's a good thing.
I think during the budget cycle, you expressed that. That it's just not the meal, right?
Right. And this proved it yesterday.
And I sit on the Senior Services Board and they have many stories of similar circumstances. And I think if you remember back in the winter, when you guys closed for a few days, it concerned me that you guys weren't doing, especially at a time like that with the weather conditions, that you guys weren't doing what you normally do.
Well, the good news on that, Dan, is that we had delivered snow kits prior to the bad weather. So they did have a backup plan. They did have some food, but they didn't have that well check.
Right, and that's what I mean. It takes care of the food part, but it doesn't take care of the wellness check. And that's very important.
It's extremely important.
And we really appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. And thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you. Thank you driver.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I know I've been up here once, but I just want to thank council and I want to thank people like the lady that just got up. Last week, I prayed for the council and the lady got up. I use that in a sermon. I'll use this in a sermon also. So I just want to say thank you. It's amazing how God works. He works in mysterious ways. Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Reverend, we thank you for what you do too. All right, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda for Thursday, April the 14th. If there's no modifications or changes.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just two matters I'd like to point out on page four. You'll see that there's a payment to Priority Install LLC in the amount of $4,250 and it's listed at Explore Outfitting. As you know, in the past, we've contracted with Priority Install to do some of our outfitting for us, but we're now doing that in-house. But we still continue to buy some of the needed equipment from Priority.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Okay, come on up to the podium, please.
Thank you.
State your name for the record.
I'm Diane Waldron. I'm the Director of Meals on Wheels, and I'm here to tell you a really interesting story. As you know, I've come to you before about Meals on Wheels and how we deliver a nutritious meal, and I've always told you that besides the meal, the home visit is just as important as the meal. And yesterday, one of our drivers, as you know, we delivered to the entire county, and we break the county up into seven regions, and this particular driver was on Route 7, which is the Back Creek Valley region, and she had 23 stops to make. At 11:25, excuse me, 11:40, she called me at my office and said, "Diane, I'm at Ms. Jerry's house, and she's not coming to the door." She's been a driver for seven years, so she knows her routes, and she knows that Ms. Jerry, who lives alone and is in a wheelchair, would come to the door. But the house is all locked up, all the curtains were drawn, so she was concerned. So she was yelling in there because Ms. Jerry's hard of hearing. So she was yelling and yelling and yelling, and she could tell that she was home, but she wasn't coming to the door for some reason. So by this time, because our driver was out there for 15 minutes screaming into the door, two of the neighbors came over, who did not have a key to the house. Bottom line is, the driver called me at the office and said, "What should I do? I don't feel like I can leave. I don't feel right about leaving." So I said, "Well, let me call the son and the daughter-in-law." Those were the emergency contacts, which I did. However, they work in Virginia, and they went to voicemail. So I said, "Call 911," because we didn't have any way to get in, and we didn't know the situation. Worst-case scenario, 911 gets there, and there's not a problem. However, when the paramedics arrived, they got through a window, because yesterday it was kind of warm, and she must have left a window open. And she had fallen the previous night, and was on the kitchen floor, had fallen out of the wheelchair. And she was in a bad state. She was really thirsty and dehydrated and was fussing. She needed something to drink, and her legs were all cramped up. Anyway, they took care of her. The neighbor stayed, the driver stayed this entire time. Now, this driver had 23 stops, which takes her three hours. She stayed until the paramedics, and she knew the neighbors were taking care of her. From there, they took her to the hospital, and she's okay. She's been discharged. But I just wanted to show you a really quick story of what really happens with Meals on Wheels. You know, that driver could have saved her life. Bottom line, I want to show you the message I got on the answering machine at 4:45 yesterday.
Received yesterday at 4:45 PM. Hi, this message is for Diane. My name is Caroline Spencer, and I just wanted to thank you today for calling 911 for my mother-in-law, Jerry Snyder. My husband's phone having issues, and so I was at work. Anyway, I'm on my way to get her now. She's being discharged from the hospital. But again, wanted to say thank you to you guys. I don't know why she has the door locked. It's usually not unless it was from this morning that she never was ever unlocked. But anyway, I just wanted to call and say thank you. Really appreciate your help. All right, goodbye.
So that's just a happy story. This happens a lot. Not every day, but it happens about once a month, so I just wanted to share that with you. So when you do support us, it's a good thing.
I think during the budget cycle, you expressed that, that it's just not the meal, right?
Right, and this proved it yesterday.
Right.
And I sit on the Senior Services Board, and they have many stories of similar circumstances. And I think if you remember back in the winter, when you guys closed for a few days, it concerned me that you guys weren't doing, especially at a time like that with the weather conditions, that you guys weren't doing what you normally do.
Well, the good news on that, Dan, is that we had delivered snow kits prior to the bad weather. So they did have a backup plan. They did have some food, but they didn't have that well check.
Right, and that's what I mean.
Yes.
It takes care of the food part, but it doesn't take care of the wellness check.
Yes.
And that's very important.
It's extremely important.
And we really appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, and thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, driver.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir, absolutely.
I know I've been up here once, but I just want to thank council, and I want to thank people like the lady that just got up. Last week, I prayed for the council, and the lady got up. I use that in a sermon. I'll use this in a sermon also. So I just want to say thank you. It's amazing how God works.
It is.
He works in mysterious ways. Thank you. Have a great season.
Reverend, we thank you for what you do, too. All right, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda for Thursday, April the 14th, if there's no modifications or changes.
There you have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just two matters I'd like to point out on page four. You'll see that there's a payment to Priority Install LLC in the amount of $4,250, and it's listed at Explore Outfitting. As you know, in the past, we've contracted with Priority Install to do some of our outfitting for us, but we're now doing that in-house. But we still continue to buy some of the needed equipment from Priority, some wiring and things like that. So this isn't for labor. It's actually for materials that we use for our outfitting opportunities. And then finally, on page seven, which is four pages from the back, you'll see that there isn't the payment in the amount of $46,125 to the Solid Waste Authority, which is the supplemental funding that you approved last week. So we did take care of that.
Okay. All right, anything, any other questions or statements on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, no internal budget revisions?
No, sir, we have none today.
We have some change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Elaine Malt County Clerk for Shali Lapp as a clerk with an annual salary of $31,000 effective April 18, 2022. Letter of resignation received from Central Dispatch for Kayla Orson effective May 1, 2022. Is that one that's been there for a while?
She had been full-time, and because she had a small child, she went to part-time, and she's now lost, and she only worked on the weekends. But she's now lost her childcare provider, so she's resigning from her part-time position. But she had been there for a while.
Okay.
She'll keep her certification, and if her childcare situation comes back, then it will improve, and we'll bring her back.
Okay, thank you. Remove Erin Dunn Carey from payroll effective April 11, 2022. This position was eliminated.
And that was a clerk in the county clerk's office in Parkin 401.
Okay, any questions on the change in status? All right, approval minutes. I was not present, so if you all would take action on those.
Mr. President, we have the minutes of March 31, 2022.
All right, the motion's been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right, and I'm staying.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. I forgot about that. All right, county council calendars. We have delay the levy on the 19th at 9:00 AM.
Where is that?
Here.
And next Thursday, we'll be here in the chambers at 9:30. I'll probably be in Jefferson County working that day. Can I call in? Any, everybody else going to be around?
The 21st.
No, the 19th. Delaying the levy?
I'll be here.
Everybody, all right, cool.
21st is just a reminder. It is a long meeting. We will have an afternoon meeting at 1 o'clock. You'll be talking about your supplemental funding allocations, if you so choose. And then at 2 o'clock, we have the architect bringing in the final drawings for the addition to the health department. Those are done.
I've got the bricks in my truck. I want to take a look and see, make sure. I always like them either have contrast or a perfect match. And so we'll make sure it goes to look great. Why do you look at me that way?
I'm still thinking about the Meals on Wheels when you're going to be signing up for that.
I was going to say anything about senior services, but I kept my mouth shut today. All right. Boards and commissions have fire board tonight at 6:30 PM. We have on Monday, the 18th, 4:00 PM Health Board, 4:00 PM Eastern Praying Annual Treasure Authority, 5:30 PM Main Street Martinsburg, 6:00 PM Planning Commission, 6:00 PM Airport Authority.
Health Board is virtual, actual, at the Port of Kent Health Department.
Okay.
Virtual, actual, actually, virtual.
All right, and then on Tuesday, the 19th, WR and Art, 9:00 AM. Councilperson Delia, 11:30 AM Parks and Rec. 5:00 PM Sewer District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District. Wednesday, the 20th, at 6:00 PM Solid Waste Authority. Any changes or corrections on those? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess. You have a little bit of activity for us. Yeah, first one's a one personal property tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, it was a, Mr. Harp, he says he got rid of the Avenger, 2014 Avenger, by July 1, 2020, but he needs market office to retire. That's where he is.
Okay.
For $65.
All right, we have one personal property tax exoneration for reasons of taxpayer error.
Taxpayer error, personal property tax, and the amount of $65.08.
Having a motion on the floor, the second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone to oppose?
Nay.
Nay. Let the record show, the motion failed. Two personal property tax exonerations due to Officer.
Yes, sir. We do have two of those we had to correct for the reasons listed there. They totaled up to $140.88.
All right, we have two personal property tax exoneration due to Officer. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion been made. And second about Mr. Barnhart. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and the real estate.
Just have one that had wrong tax class on it, and we had to track that. It was $747.88.
We have, and a motion. So move.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the real estate tax exoneration. Have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had a Burke County Public Service Water District meeting Monday. They approved the design plans for Mount Air Recovery Village. That's three homes, 19-town homes, two 48-bed dormitories, and an activity building. Pretty ambitious application. Also approved an alternate mainline extension for Virginia Avenue and Jefferson Street.
That would probably be on the other side of Route 9, wouldn't it? Dan, could that be over on Mike Coller's property? Wouldn't that be those, wouldn't that be probably?
Replace a line or something.
Oh, replace a line?
Yeah.
Oh, there's.
They have proclamation for National Drinking Water Week, and they'll be here for us to do the same thing. And they gave an update on several items. The Woods Water Plant, the 90% demo, currently. And we're working on the ride plans for the River Plant to up it from $16 million to $10 million.
Should be bidding, not bidding.
Has the land been bid for the line going down Route 11 coming from Grubbs Tower? Has that been bid yet, or they still getting?
All right, Mr. Delia.
Let me see here. Get my calendar back on. I did tend to, I missed the farmland meeting, was out of town. Didn't do the Development Authority. I'll let you talk about that. The, had a meeting last night with the Roundhouse. Actually, had a mixer first for Main Street Martinsburg downtown at Brick's, and then went over to the Roundhouse meeting and discussed the ins and outs of how the home show went for the Roundhouse.
It went good. There was some difficulties with the building that we talked about. There's, at some point, we got to figure out how to put doors indoors, because the doors that are on the building, historic doors, sliding doors, they don't provide emergency act or escape or access out of the building. So we've got to figure out how to do that. One of the problems with the home show was that it was cold, and the doors had to be let open. And so they were closing the doors, and then they couldn't have heat in there because, you know, your occupancy, it was a little, it was a little tough. So we discussed ways to try to resolve that down the road. And of course, you know, it takes money to resolve that. But other than that, it was very successful. They had, they didn't even do an estimate count, at least that we haven't had it yet. But the place was packed on Saturday, the whole day. Sunday, a little less, of course, it was pretty cold on Sunday that they had it. But, and we're looking towards how to do the same thing with the bridge building, although we've got everything pretty much figured out. We've got electrical issue that's got to be addressed, and doors have got to be addressed over there, as well as the, as well as the grant came back, and they need another $40,000. But one of the nice things we found out last night in conversation is a few years back, the brick company had donated a lot of brick pavers, and the whole center of the, of the bridge building has to have brick pavers from the rails that are in the ground, so from the outside of one rail to the outside of the other rail, which is like 13 feet the length of the building. That whole center section, we need brick pavers. Well, we have a whole bunch of brick pavers, and we made, we're going to do a count this week, but we may have enough to do that. That'll save some money there. But auto, it was a good event. We have several other events scheduled throughout the year. This year, if we stay on track with what's going on right now, this year, the Roundhouse will generate more income this year than it has in the past five years.
Home show going to be there, Mr.?
We haven't had that conversation. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Delia. Mr. Whitaker?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Gokenhader?
Yes, sir. I had a 911 Advisory Board meeting on Tuesday. They just started a new academy. They have five new employees in their academy, and this is for the call takers. And they just had a resignation of one part-time employee, and they only have one part-time employee left. But they're currently, they're working on their bylaws, the constitutional bylaws that they apparently not had. So they've got a committee working on that. And also, they're working on and doing very well with their accreditation. They're meeting all their marks.
Oh, yeah, that's coming along really nice.
Yeah, so they're pretty excited about that. That's about it.
Okay. I had Development Authority meeting, and the things that I can talk about is they're practically 100% leased out on the 300 and the 400 building. They, they had a contract out for the HVAC, which is underway and probably almost done. And then they have, they found that they were losing 20% of the airflow through the ductwork, so they approved to go ahead and upgrade and seal that ductwork from the inside out. And they're working on a promotional video for anybody that's interested in doing business here in Burke County. And they got a rough draft of it. It needs to be edited more, but it was mainly focused on the workforce, you know, qualified workforce and the different options they have to get the training that they would need to get their plant up and running and everything of that nature. So more about the Rumsey and Blue Ridge CTC, the school board itself. So Jennifer's been working on that. There's a lot of activity there about people wanting to come to Burke County. I think, I think there's what, eight different businesses?
There's several, but there's eight that are actively, actively still working to locate and negotiate deals. So that's probably the most real active that we've had in a long time. I mean, we've always had stuff going on, but that's the most at one time that are really moving forward.
Yeah.
But you got space for?
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's, and the funny thing was that two of them that were listed originally as around 100 people have gone up to about 250 people because they want to not only do one, but one of them wants to move.
One of the things that you hear about all the time is the growth of Burke County, but it's more from the social media side. And as I was telling somebody the other day, you know, one of the reasons you have growth, it's proven fact, is because you have jobs. And the state of West Virginia in the southern part don't have jobs, and that's why they continue to lose population. And the other thing, too, that, so if you want to, if you want to slow up or stop growth, you stop creating jobs. The other thing is, is jobs, when there's so many jobs out there, now it becomes competitive. And, you know, we talk about Quad used to, just to use them as an example, used to advertise positions for $14 an hour. I think they're up to $26 an hour now. 23, 26, somewhere around that neighborhood. So, and that was one of, one of the goals, was to bring up the average wage in Burke County to, you know, help the people that's here.
The living wage.
Right.
I watch Channel 25 at 5:30. They got West Virginia news. And they, you know, actually, the governor and all these people have been tallying some possible new industries in central, southern, those parts of West Virginia. Do steel plant.
Yep, that's big town.
Battery plant and all kinds of stuff.
All right, we'll come back to that. Let's go ahead and do the RFP at 10 o'clock. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Your bid opening today is for the annual ammunition purchased by the Sheriff's Department. The sheriff's requesting via request for proposals prices for 200,000 rounds of 9-millimeter ammo and 160,000 rounds of 223 Remington-5.56 ammunition. The RFP was distributed. It was advertised in the Martinsburg Journal. We do have certification publication found in your packet, certifying that it did appear on Monday, April 4, 2022. The deadline for bid submission was 4:00 PM yesterday, Wednesday, April 13, and we've received one bid prior to the deadline.
Do you know, does the sheriff shoot up all that ammunition?
They use it on the range, daytime qualifying, nighttime qualifying. The rapid response team uses them in exercises.
So do we change the qualification on it? Because if I remember correctly, and my memory fails me sometimes, but if I remember correctly. I thought it was 2,000 rounds per deputy, and this is over 3,000 rounds per deputy.
Yeah, it was 2,000 per year.
So this is, this is about 3,000 rounds.
I know they're doing a lot more training now, specialized training than they did in years past, but I couldn't answer that.
So is this, and I thought last year, wasn't it last year we went ahead and got everything done for this coming year, and we decided to do conversations because of hard to get, but this would be for moving forward?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And the council provided a supplemental, almost like a pre-fiscal year allocation last year at this time for. per just in advance. So this year is, out of the current year's budget, it's per year, it's year in advance.
Right, okay. So at some point, this, if, if this corrects itself and you don't have to order so far out, this may, this may fall back on the book.
Yeah, and if you remember, last time they bid it out, it was, I don't know, six or eight months.
Right.
The live, the live group that they did.
Right, yeah, they, I don't even know if we've gotten, if we got that.
I don't know.
Leave time on this bid is twelve to twenty-four months. Maybe we need to start reliving the old shit.
Reloading?
All right, um, we got one bid. Um, Kiesler, K.I.E.S.L.E.R., Police Supply Inc. Out of Jeffersonville, Indiana, I guess, I. Um, for the nine millimeter, it could be one fifteen, one twenty-four, one forty-seven grain. They're specifying a A E nine D D, thousand rounds per case, two hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents per case, two hundred cases at forty-nine thousand, three seventy-four. What's up there for a case price? Um, two-twenty-three Remington or five-point-five-six ammo. Um, it's an A E two-twenty-three and it's five hundred rounds per case, two hundred and forty-two thirty-nine per case, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents for three hundred and twenty cases. Lead time twelve to twenty-four months. And price for all ammunition is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine thirty-eight eighty. Hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine thirty-eight eighty.
Memory serves me right.
Huh?
Say if memory serves me right, this is about twenty-five to thirty-seven.
It's, I tell you what, yeah. You could use about.
I don't remember it being over a hundred thousand.
No, it was under a hundred.
You could buy two-twenty-three for, for, uh, two, around three hundred dollars a pound. They're up over six hundred, seven dollars a pound.
Right, I think this is, I think this is significantly more ammunition than we had. Right, um, the one thing I didn't see or hear in that was, what was that? What was that, uh, that, uh, those guns that we had approved that are impact guns?
The non-leak.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing in that.
That's a separate bid, right?
Yeah, that's, that was done a separate bid and if you remember, we did that out. I'm sure I didn't receive any, any quotes on that. It's not been rebid.
Um, we, I think we rebid it back, oh, we bid it, we bid it once, but, uh. All right, all right, going back, uh, Mr. Barnhart, you were saying a couple of words?
Yeah, I was just, you know, commenting on the, the increased activity in the employment situation in the rest of the state.
I think that, you know, one of the things, I think I probably already said this, but I had to say it last, yesterday to somebody else was, you know, you get blamed for the growth in Burke County, but when you look at the census between two thousand and ten to, I'm sorry, two thousand, two thousand and ten, the percentage of growth was higher than what it was between the years of two thousand and ten, two thousand and twenty. So, and that's on the, the information at the library.
Well, you know, it, that, one of the things that I've heard a lot, um, was obviously, you know, what's county gonna do about roads, what's county gonna do about schools? And, uh, obviously those are, are up to other elected officials and, and their responsibility, roads being part of the state road system. But, um, and, and we do have conversation with Department of Highways and try to help solve, um, some issues that are brought to the county's attention and, and, uh, you know, obviously issues that we already know about, um, try to work on. But the interesting thing is the school's side has elected officials. And one of, one of the things that people don't look at, if, if you look into the southern part of the states, the schools down there, where those, those areas are dying off in populations, haven't been upgraded. You know, those schools look like old schools. And if you look in our area, our schools are very well up, uh, kept up. And, and, uh, some of the most advanced, um, learning, um, the tablets, those type of things that we have here in Burke County, they don't have it in a lot of other places where the population's dying off, so.
Well, there's a case, I think, Lincoln County or O'Uman County, Southern County. State is considering taking over Board of Education, it goes with certain lack of whatever.
So, so, well, what I'm saying is, you know, the growth, although it does tax the school system, it actually helps the school system to advance and, and give our, our children here better educations as well as, uh, um, better facilities, um, for learning.
Right. I can agree. Uh, I know that many times I've been over to the state to go to different meetings, anywhere you go, there's always a traffic issue. I mean, just because Berkeley County does have the growth that we have, there's traffic issues all over the state. So, I mean, I've seen it with my own eyes.
All right, any activity on board and commission vacancies?
Yes, sir. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to appoint, um, James Marshall the third to the, uh, Ambulance Authority.
I have a motion on forward. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Tracy, that will be, he'll be filling, uh, Sandy Hamilton that just, uh, her time expired. Um, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. Any other activity on boards and commissions? We do have a resignation from Homer Speaker.
Letter, Saint Tone.
We do, yeah. For the Criminal Justice Board.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'll read you.
Well, I thought you were talking to me. I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
You're talking to the other gray-haired man.
Yeah, one's harder hearing.
All right, next on our agenda is Tracy Gomes, um, Grant Administrator, Tim Zia, Community Correction Director, request to apply for physical year two thousand and twenty-two. S A M I S A Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Planning, Development and Implementa- Implementation Grant and Resolution. And y'all give me a lot to say at one time. I need to work on my cardio, Tracy.
Um, the potential funding source is the Substance Use and Mental Health Services Administration or SAMSA. Um, this is for the Day Report Center. It is a duration of forty-eight months or four years. The maximum federal award is four million dollars, a million each year and a zero match. Background, the purpose of this program is to help to transform community behavioral health systems and provide comprehensive, coordinated health, behavioral health care by establishing a new community, I'm sorry, Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, providing in-person and family-centered integrated services. The intent of this grant is to, one, assist organizations in the planning for and development and implementation, of a C C B H C that meet the C C B H C certification. Two, to provide a comprehensive range of outreach, screening, assessment, treatment, care coordination and recovery supports based on a need assessment that aligns with the C C B H C certification criteria. And three, support recovery from mental illness and substance use disorder by providing access to high-quality mental health and substance use disorder services regardless of an individual's ability to pay. The grant funding will pay for the following at a hundred percent for years one through four. Personnel salary and fringe for one clinical supervisor, one billing specialist, four case managers, three therapists, three drug screen techs, one peer recovery coach, one driver and one administrative assistant. In year one, it will additionally pay for five complete computers, twelve licenses for clinical software and a communication class for half of the staff. Year two, the additional, um, things that it will pay for are lab fees, twelve licenses for clinical software and communication class for half of the staff. Year three, it will pay for lab fees, twelve licenses for clinical software, conflict resolution class for half of the staff. Year four, it will pay for lab fees, twelve licenses for clinical software, um, and a conflict resolution class for half of the staff. And it will also pay for one mini day.
All right, Tracy, anybody have any questions for Tracy? All right, Tim, come on forward.
Tim, the positions listed, particularly the clinical supervisor, the billing specialist and therapist, these are not above and beyond what the council's already discussed and approved.
No, sir.
This is the fund.
Fund currently, yes.
So just to clarify that, he's not continuing to build his empire. This is, this is just.
This one we talked about a few months ago, that he was coming to come.
Correct. And the council, we already moved ahead. Um, for example, Crystal has been reclassified effect of July first. Not Crystal, Erin is, Erin is, as the clinical supervisor.
And we said something while she got the certification that was a green light.
Correct. So I just wanna point out that all they, all Tim and Tracy have done is identified a, a potential funding source so that these positions will be funded for the next four years through a grant and not through general funding. And they will continue to generate, and these positions, although they're grant funded, will generate revenue streams through Medicare.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Medicaid, Medicaid.
So this is a way to win, if we get it, all right?
Do you have enough space for the roll?
Yes, sir.
Today?
Yeah, yeah.
This isn't asking for positions, right?
Well, it says lab fees, is that?
One of our biggest expenses.
Yeah.
Spending fifteen thousand roughly a month in lab fees for drug screening.
So this covers all that?
No, sir. It wouldn't cover all of it. It's a relevant portion.
And, but some of those lab fees are reimbursed by D H R.
Tim, uh, I guess they're constantly at the lab chasing new types of drugs, aren't they? Changing all the time. And Dan, you said, uh, state of Texas has basically made fentanyl a poison. So by law, if somebody dies of fentanyl, they're sentenced to, for, to, for.
It changes, it changes the minimum sentence. I think right now, minimum sentence, if, uh, uh, if I'm correct, I, I think it's two years is the minimum sentence right now. Or, or again, the minimum sentence is two years for, uh, um, for an overdose, um, which would make it murder. Um, if it, by poisoning, which would change that minimum sentence.
Texas made that a?
Yeah.
The United States, our federal government would not stop allowing it to come across the border with.
Exactly.
Well, there's, there's, there's a, and there's a conversation going about the benefits of that and how to, uh, um, I think this year, if I remember right, the, the legislature may change the law about the fentanyl in the pills because they, um, they were compressing pills, um, I guess now to, and putting fentanyl in those pills that look like other opioids and they're putting fentanyl in them and that made that a bigger sentence, um, or a different sentence just in itself, I put on that. The manufacturing, I guess, part of it. But it's a, it's a, I mean, it's something you gotta chase all the time.
Yeah.
Because it changes every year, doesn't it?
Yeah, the designer drugs that, that, they always change. There's a, a list this long, you have four different drugs that, that we have to request it to be done. It's expensive test, but, um, the most common one that we've found here in Burke County is Utol. There's a bunch more out there that have been identified and we can test for.
What's that called?
It's, it's a, it's a meth-like drug. Have you ever seen people in town, uh, walking around doing this kind of stuff? That's, they're called boot on the streets. It's Utol.
They call what boot?
Boot.
But they're actually, um, they're actually having problems with that being laced with fentanyl.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, fentanyl's in a lot of different, a lot of designers.
If I'm correct, uh, I've heard that that's part of the, uh, overdose problem right now.
Yes.
Is that they're putting the fentanyl in, in the, uh, meds and they're, they're dying from.
Yeah, yeah. Five years ago, fentanyl wasn't really the thing. The heroin was morphine. That's, that's possible, morphine. Now, morphine's gone, the oxycodone's gone, fentanyl.
And fentanyl's being produced all over the world or mainly in, in Mexico?
My understanding is most of it's produced in China, but it's coming into the United States across the southern border.
It's actually listed as, I mean, it's, it's an actually, uh, part of a prescribed medicine as well, so.
Yeah, it's still prescribed in hospitals for people that have surgeries and whatever, I, you know. But the stuff that's on the street is produced in.
Right.
Labs and.
Yeah.
It's very dangerous.
These samples, urine or blood or where are?
Urine.
Strictly urine?
Yeah.
Do you guys do, uh, testing for the airport authority? I, I think pilots and those type of things still have to have that.
We don't do them for them, we can't.
Right, I, I'm just curious. I was, I was looking at the, uh, um, I got lucky and they voted me in as treasurer. So I was looking at the projected for next year and there's, uh, a, a couple thousand dollars that's projected for those fees. So maybe we need to have that conversation.
All right.
I would say, based on the continued increase, uh, in the drug activity that not only we're seeing, but across this whole country, uh, and based on your success rate, I would suggest that you'd be getting your job descriptions in line because the need is there. It's obvious that the need is there, so.
We're working on this new pilot program with the risk of open versus whatever it's just, to streamline the workers' compensation recording process and also give us more, more control. They actually triage the workers' comp claim as soon as it's submitted. So, and, and we have Vivian and Mike coming in sometime next month, May. Um, we did get a renewal. Um, our renewal was actually less this year than it was last year, so that's good news. So at the same time that I bring a renewal in to have Mike and Vivian coming in to explain this new, this new program in the morning and then, and, and we're gonna make the effect of July first and then in the afternoon, um, they're actually going to be doing training for, uh, departmental representatives on the new, the new process for filing workers' complaints. But one of the things that they are encouraging that, that I want to talk towards the council about is with worker, a workers' comp claim, particularly if it appears that it's going to be a lost time claim, that we do some type of post-accident drug testing, um, to see whether the employee, be it a deputy or whoever, may have been under the influence at the time of the accident. So, um, if the council decides we can't do, uh, we do random drug testing now for a nine-one-one dispatchers, which is really, it's been going very, very well. Um, but for the non-public safety employees, by law, we can't do random drug testing. But we can do probable cause. We can, we can also do post-accident for testing. So that's something that probably, you know, we'll be discussing more with you within the next six days.
That's, that's big in the construction industry.
It is, so.
All right, so, um, right now, just so you know, Tim, um, and I'm sure that you're probably right in the loop. It might even be included in the emails, but, um, our budget for the jail bill this year was two-point-eight. We're tracking it right now, currently in the first eight months, we are a quarter million dollars, um, above where we were this time last year, plus or minus. So it looks like if we're tracking, this was our biggest increase, was a hundred and eight thousand, almost a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars for this month, above last year. Um, so we could be. Um, so we could be half a million dollars more, and I think that's just because of the additional court cases, probably, right? Or you still have capacity, or you don't have any capacity at all?
We, we have capacity for program participants, we're, we're higher than we've ever been, we're, we're around three hundred now. Week by week, we'll, we'll go up above three hundred and then drop down to two ninety-five and then three oh two, we've been hovering around there for several weeks. And it's, it's always this slow, steady, and that'll, that'll continue. I think the scary thought is, where would we be if not for any of this?
Oh, no, I understand.
It would be completely chaos.
Five million, six million dollars, so.
If you calculate, if you calc, and I just did it the other day, if you calculate how many people you have in the program and in the home confinement program as jail participants, it's seven and a half million dollars for you.
So we, we have some capacity for, for additional program participants. We just don't have additional capacity currently for more staff this month.
Right, well, I, I, I'm just making these statements just so the general public understands that, you know, just for the month of March, our regional jail bill was two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and three dollars and seventy thousand cents, over a quarter million dollars. Um, so, and that's with everything we're doing right.
The crazy thing is, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing if it wasn't for these grant writers to be able to do what they're doing and, and keep, keep the funding source coming in to help this program, they're wonderful.
All right, need a motion to, um, apply for the, uh, grant. That's, that's what, that's what we need the motion to say, right?
Or adopt the resolution.
Well, I need a motion to apply and then motion to accept the resolution for certification.
Move to, you might as well do them both at the same time.
I move to apply and to adopt the resolution.
Thanks.
Which one you wanna do first?
Oh, you gotta have two separate ones, I just said you can do them both at the same time. So you got me in trouble.
Long, as it gets fine.
I don't know, the, the legal counsel looks like he wants to talk about something.
I don't think anybody's gonna come back and complain. One, separately or together, I think. The record will reflect that.
All right, Mr. Whitaker, which one you wanna do?
Try again.
Try again, I move to, uh, apply for the grant, for the four million dollar federal grant request.
All right, the motion's been made. Second, any discussion? If not, on, fair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Do you have anything else to say, Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir, I'd like to adopt the resolution for certification.
There, you have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that as well.
You'll do that too?
Yeah.
Okay, second, any discussion? If not, on, fair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
If you apply, when do you hear, do you have any idea?
Um.
When they award.
Um, it's, some have been early this year, but the majority of what we've been applying for is late summer, September. It takes effect October first, but that doesn't mean that we were here before October first.
Too bad that they don't have a timeline to, to administer them, is what we do to apply for them.
Don't start that conversation.
This is based on the federal fiscal year.
Huh?
This is based on a federal, the federal fiscal year, which started October first.
Yeah, all right.
I have a question, before Doug puts us in the break here. Is there, have you heard of any grants for like historic, for, for like security, for historic properties?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
But on the whiteboard, the time April, yeah. All that information.
Okay, maybe I'll, maybe I'll look. The, the Roundhouse has had some problems with vandalism on the property and it being an historic landmark. Maybe there's a possibility that there was a grant to be able to provide some cameras and, and better security out there. As, as we continue to spend money out there and, and improve the property, it'd be nice to make sure it was protected. We had some expensive glass doors busted right out of the building, you know, those type of things.
Can we electrify the fence?
I don't know if the city's gonna go for that, but.
Just depends on who pays the bill.
Yeah, that was how they got in, they cut a section of the fence, so that would've got them, Jim.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
All right, thanks Tracy, I'm gonna go back to boards and commissions, uh, meetings, it wasn't a, a board, but I did wanna recognize Matthew Olstead for all the work he's done on the two hundred and fiftieth celebration, but, um, they had the tree planted down at Adam Stevens, you know, I was there, and one of them-
Sugar Maple, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, what a gorgeous facility, I mean, the building itself and the grounds is just gorgeous. So hopefully, when that trail comes through there from the city of Martinburg-
It'll make a loop.
Well, well, will actually draw some attention to that, to those historical buildings.
Well, I've been having conversations about doing, trying to put some, some type of, uh, um, bus tour around and add that in as well, because I think you're exactly right. It's one of those, one of those many gems that we have, uh, here in Berkeley County that we don't draw enough attention to.
Did you get tow ropes on that bus so you can just pull me around on a bike?
You know, I, I made the-
I'll make sure I stop, I'll, I'll slow up first.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's some way we can figure out to drag you around.
All right, let's take a quick break.
All right. We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Will Lawrence and fiduciary supervisor order for the estate of Elizabeth K. Washington.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning, handsome. How you doing?
Good.
I can always get a giggle out of here.
As counsel mentioned, this is for the estate of Elizabeth K. Washington. As discussed last week with the estates settled for this month, we have a situation where a state hearing is scheduled for April 28th and my motion, my pending motion for this council consideration would postpone that indefinitely pending a fiduciary commissioner's assignment from my office and finding submitted to this council. Just a little bit of background, on April 30th, 2021 Nakawa, Washington was appointed administrator for the estate of his aunt Elizabeth Washington, seven days after her passing. Mr. Washington was able to do so in such short order due to his bonding status for $15,000 in a nomination waiver form, which was received by a Sidney W. Devonshire, the only identified heir at the time. We later learned that Sidney Devonshire was a minor, so had no authority to sign a nomination waiver form. That fact was not disclosed at Mr. Washington's appointment. It was later discovered that a second heir at law, not identified but Mr. Washington, was found. This is a Mr. Durante Michael White, a grandchild of the deceased, and it was initially left off of Mr. Washington's list of heirs. That was immediately amended at the request of my office and put onto record February 10th of this year. February 18th of this year, Sidney W. Devonshire, by counsel, ordered or petitioned this council, this body, for various objections and allegations of wrongdoing against Mr. Washington in the year that he has been in charge of this estate. Mr. Washington then responded to me personally by email indicating both his willingness to provide our office with an interim settlement of accounts to account for the estate's personal assets and also to rebut nearly all of the alleged facts asserted by Mr. Devonshire's attorney in his petition. Among Mr. Washington's rebuttal, he stated he would be calling as many as six witnesses to testify on his behalf. On March 28th, 2022, Mr. Washington executed his interim settlement and sent same to my office. This office did not publish the settlement due to various errors that it contained. Among them, Mr. Washington declared far more non-real estate probate assets than he was bonded for, nearly $100,000 in non-probate assets, in non-real estate probate assets, excuse me. Mr. Washington also disclosed that he was reimbursing himself from the estate for things like groceries, phone bills, personal withdrawals that were not fully explained in his filing, and so on and so forth. Suffice it to say, this estate has its issues. Thus, I believe circumstances warrant a fiduciary commissioner's attention, insight, and finding to present to this council. Lastly, this council was provided a proposed order. The order in front of Mr. Copenhagen is actually slightly different. I am proposing that this order require my office to increase the surety bond level for Mr. Washington to better reflect the true value of the estate assets listed in Mr. Washington's interim settlement than nearly $100,000 that he listed. This addition was made in consultation with Mr. Delgati's office, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. With that, I ask that this council consider my proposed order postponing the estate hearing for the estate of Elizabeth K. Washington pending a finding from the fiduciary commissioner.
Do they have any questions for Will at this time? Okay, entertain a motion for the order of the estate of Elizabeth K. Washington.
If the president makes motion, we accept the request by the fiduciary supervisor, Mr. Lawrence.
Have a motion on the floor. Have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, on favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. So, Will, I've got a stupid question, not about this case, but what happens if someone did do something illegal in this state? Other words, let's say paid mill, reimbursed herself, did this and did that, that becomes a lawsuit in circuit court, right?
It does. So, there are two separate issues of liability, one is criminal, one is civil. Criminal liability for fraud would be handled by prosecuting attorney's office. Civil matters such as you indicating the petitioner and their counsel would have free reign to sue Mr. Washington.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. You did vote, right?
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is Allen Davis County Minister, Bunker Hill Roadside Park.
Who?
Yeah. Bunker Hill Roadside Park lease. Mr. Davis, bail me out, please.
If the council will recall, on Thursday, November 4th, the council, after discussion with Matt Umstead, by consensus, asked Matt to work with the West Virginia Division of Highways to acquire a lease to operate and maintain the Morgan Park, which they referred to as the Bunker Hill Roadside Park. If you recall, the conversation was we wanted to get it cleaned up, we wanted to make sure that there was access for some fishing and maybe even put a handicapped fishing area in, and there was even some opportunity maybe to expand the park, which I think is only about an acre, working with some private landholders that own land adjacent to the park. We did receive correspondence from the West Virginia Division of Highways, along with proposed five-year lease on the property, which is in your packet. The lease has been reviewed by Mr. Delagati for legal correctness, Mr. Umstead and me. It appears to be pretty straightforward. It is a five-year lease. It is not automatically renewed. It gives the Department of Highway the discretion of renewing it every five years. It does state that the county is responsible for any risk of loss and must maintain insurance on the property, which we would do regardless. Our only reason for pause is that although it doesn't specifically include the monument, we assume that as part of property maintenance, it is the monument also, which I understand is in need of some repairs. Now, if you'll recall, when Mr. Randall Reed Smith was in here two weeks ago, this actually came up, and I think Randall indicated that the state may be willing to assist us in refurbishing the monument, so.
Yeah, I think working through the lawmakers, legislative delegation, and Randall Reed Smith's office, I think, I think, yeah, there's support for maintaining this monument will be there. I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but this is a state monument, essentially approved by the legislature, approved by the governor, coming up in 2024. So, I mean, it would be my belief that if we requested funds for, through the lawmakers, legislature, we could get support for repair. It's not in terrible deteriorated condition. Essentially, Randall Reed advised that he could provide some guidance on the cleaning procedure. So, you could have some group of volunteers, as he suggested, volunteers engaged in maintaining and helping keep the park beautiful, that he could provide guidance on the cleaning of the actual monument. So, I don't really see that being like a super difficult thing to accomplish. It's not in terrible deteriorated shape, it just needs a little bit of polishing.
It has a growth on it, more than anything.
Yes.
And dirt and ground from the atmosphere.
Right. It's not in terrible shape.
Wet it and forget it. It's just, you spray it on there, mother nature takes care of it.
Is that right?
The front of courthouse, maybe before yesterday. The front of courthouse had been treated, maybe before yesterday, by the way.
The top part?
Interesting.
Interesting. Wait, wait and see.
About a month and a half.
Yeah, a month and a half, two months. Makes a huge difference.
Yeah, they closed out the work order on Tuesday.
Yeah, and it's environmental friendly.
Yeah, it's not a chemical. It's a, well, it's a... Yeah, it's not a chemical. It's a, well, it's a, yeah, but not a harsh chemical.
Biodegradable.
Yes.
What about?
And I know this is something that this, this park has been of interest to the counsel for some time. So, this is, I think, a great opportunity to really.
Right. And from an everyday law enforcement perspective, I think it would be beneficial to have this lease in place, too. And we let the sheriff know and those folks know that, you know, if they need to use this property after hours.
I actually had a conversation with the property owner last week beside of it, and she is excited about this process, that it's going, moving forward. And she's excited for a future conversation about how it can grow and become something that the community is going to be able to use.
And this will be included in our community service rotation. So, don't go down and take care of the litter and trash and everything like that.
That was going to be my question. I mean, the lease is with us. Is this going to fall under the umbrella of the Parks and Rec?
I would think eventually.
Or are we going to manage it ourselves?
I would think Parks and Rec would.
Well, yeah, with community service help, right? But, I mean, it's, we're not going to manage it. We're not going to make sure that the trash gets dumped and all that stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one other thing.
The other things that Parks and Rec would benefit from the other, especially the fishing aspect of recreation and stuff like that.
So, what we'll do is we'll send community service down there and grub and clean and do all that stuff and get everything cleaned up, and then turn it over to Parks and Rec, right? Because, I mean, they do a lot of work for Parks and Rec anyway.
Yeah, it's grown up, especially along the creek. I mean, it's really.
In the roadside side.
It just, it just needs some attention. Well, we also talked about trying to come up with a way to put a handicap fishing access in there as well.
I touched base with Tracy, a grants administrator, about that. And just, it's on her sticky board for grant opportunities for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, the federal fund. And there was an article in Wisconsin where they had an ADA fishing awarded project from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Funds are out there for that.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the Seoul Conservation Office, meaning people like Floyd Cursey and stuff, if he's still there, I know you said he's going to retire, they do a lot of creek restoration work. And it'd be good to work with somebody like that because then they can do all the legwork and get all the approvals through all the state and federal agencies.
There's some stream, what you're thinking of is stream bank restoration. They do. They do the preservation of the stream banks.
But I know if I.
Actually, there's not, if you're not moving a piece of equipment into that stream, to go in and do stream restoration, I had meetings, because I own a portion of property that borders about 800 feet of stream, and had conversations with the DDP EPA Stormwater. And I was told that I didn't need any permits or anything if it was all done by hand. If you're going to put a piece, or even by reaching into, if you're going to put a piece of equipment in the stream, then you have a bunch of regulations you have to go through.
You're right. All those agencies you're good on, I know if you put a culvert in a stream, you got to get approval from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yep. You change the flow.
So, I don't know. I would just reach out to make sure that there's nothing, you know.
And you're probably right. If we do a, if we do a concrete fishing access, we're putting something in the flood plain as well. So, that would probably have to be approved, too.
Can we do all this on the terms of the lease? Is all this improvement, land, I mean, not just scrubbing and cleaning, but actually building something?
Anthony can speak specifically to what the lease states. It says.
Well, typically, what I would do is get approval. I'd write him a letter for approval to do the capital improvements, pavilions, you know.
I was saying a pavilion and, you know, the stream.
The lease, the lease provides for a pedestrian trail and I think specifies fishing.
Yes, but as for putting structures, I would want to get permission from the property.
Right. That's what I would recommend.
The only real prohibition is that we can't put signs on it that specify the lease.
But there was a shelter on it years ago. I remember.
Shelter and fireplaces.
Two fireplaces.
Shelters and fireplaces.
Yeah, it was two, two grilled.
Must be two outhouses.
And I can't imagine the state would object to something we're paying for. But, yeah, we did their authorization.
Tough there to keep people out of it after hours, that's for sure.
But, I mean, it was always, it's always been, but.
It might be helpful.
Does it have a sign now sunup to sunset?
I don't recall seeing any kind of advisory on use or access.
Because I think that would be important on that.
Or a sign of any kind. There's no identifying.
Park closes after dark.
I don't even believe there's a sign there to say that it is Morgan Park. There's just.
Yeah, I don't even think.
There's some historical highway markers that are there placed on the property that are being refurbished as we speak, thanks to Randall Reed Smith, Art School of History. But there's no, there's no sign from Morgan Park itself. And that's one of the issues as well. I was just going to say that the only other recommendation that I had regarding this, if you all are inclined to improve this, is that the next step would be to maybe do a little outreach there in the Bunker Hill community and kind of engage them and invite them to be a partner, a volunteer committee looking out for the property and.
This is really a pretty important part of history. You know, I think it's when you go to Florida down 95 and stuff, you see all those old gas stations off to the right on the east, west side of 95. It's all the gas stations that was the mom and pop service stations that were there before 95, the four lane went through, you know? It's kind of pretty historical, kind of like the old station down here on Queen Street, that the marker is supposed to be restored and all that.
Respect.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So, neither must approve the lease agreement and give me the authority to sign it, I guess. Or is it?
Yes, counsel. I have the two originals here. I have the two originals for you to sign.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor. Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Davis, you have.
Can we, how are we going to move forward with the discussion with the property owner about what we were talking about? Is that going to?
Actually, Matt had a good discussion with her a while back, and I told him six months ago, continue to build up on that relationship.
Okay. Because when I, when I spoke to her last week, I said I would mention that. So, that once we get to that point, to actually get ahold of her and talk to her about what's taking place right now, update her, and see when she's willing to have a conversation about expanding that.
I advised her this item was on the agenda two days ago.
So, Matt can take the lead over there.
We had a very nice conversation. Obviously, we'd have to discuss more about possible expansion, what you all would want to do. How much?
All right. Might not be a bad idea to try to work on that park, get it cleaned up, do this, and show her what we want to do, you know? And then, then talk to her.
Show her the vision, I think, would be helpful and get, paint the picture a little bit.
Yep. All right.
Yeah, it'd be nice just to relieve her from emptying the garbage can.
I would, I would like to get focus on a sign that says open from sunup to sundown or whatever.
In the lease, you can have a sign that says indicating the prior ownership of property and type of activity is conducted. But all signs should have prior approval of investment. So, you got to just tell the DMHA where you put this sign in there. They don't want some big sign with advertising or.
Right, right.
Locking it to use.
While, while we work on some type of sign that states about the hires and the use or whatever.
We would, we would make it so it fits the style and manner of the park system.
All right. Better get with the parks real quick and make sure, get them to, get the board to accept stuff instead. Let's just stone it on. All right. Mr. Davis, Senate Bill 172, compensation of elected officials.
Yes, sir. Last legislative session, Senate Bill 172, which is referred to as the salary bill, was passed on March the 11th, 2022. Governor Justice has signed the bill into law, which increases the salaries for county elected officials, and it's done by class, by county class. The bill becomes effective 90 days from passage. So, the bill becomes effective June the 11th, 2022. However, the bill does contain language that requires the state auditor's office to review fiscal condition of each county to ascertain whether the county can approve it or not. And I think in some informal conversations I've had with the state auditor's office, they're concerned, for example, that there may be counties out there that have not met their obligations to the state in the form of payment to their regional jail bill that would instead give themselves pay raises. So, they have developed a process in which each elected official, meaning the 10 elected officials in the county, would, and they've given us a template. It just says, typically, it just says, "I, name of office holder, the duly elected, name of office in and for the county, name of county, hereby request a salary increase pursuant to West Virginia Code 7-7-4. If this code has amended, this salary increase is effective, which would be July 1st of 2022." Each individual elected official may or may not elect, current office holders may, just like they did last time they did the salary increases, may or may not elect to take the salary. However, any future office holders that are voted into office would be, would automatically get the increase. So, that you can see that for county council, for Class 1 county, which we are, we go from 41 395 to 45 535. County clerk would go from 62 093 to 68 302. Same way with circuit clerk. Prosecuting attorney would go from 108 192 to 11911. Assessor and sheriff would both go from 50,000 266 to 56,00793. This would not affect the assessor supplement. The assessors get, the current assessor gets two supplements. He gets the ag report supplement, which is $5,027, and the supplement that is provided once all the values are in the system of $15,000. And the sheriff also gets what they call a commission on taxes in the amount of $15,000. What the auditor's office is recommending, because it would affect your budget, and we typically submit state budget revisions to them, is that we provide this information to each elected official, give them, you know, two or three weeks to make the decision as to whether they want the supplement or not, get it back to us, and then we would submit it collectively as a package to the state auditor's office for review and decision. Is that okay with the counsel?
It is.
Okay.
Be an emotional, all right?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, just consensus that this process you want me to follow.
All right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Do you think the state would have it approved by July 1st? Or if they didn't, it would be retroactive?
Yeah, it would be retroactive. But what I thought I'd do is put notice out tomorrow. And I have it in Word format so that all the elected official has to do is fill in the blanks, put it on letterhead and sign it, and send it back to me. Give them a deadline of May 15th, which is a month. That's more than enough time for the state auditor's office. Now, they did say, don't wait until the last minute because of, you know, the number of counties that are involved. They still have counties that haven't submitted their levy document yet. So, yeah. So, they're, they're behind them, the curve right now. But six weeks should be more than enough time.
According to the, a prior county commissioner, we was way behind on it. We should have had ours in before we even started.
That's what, that's what I've heard. I'll take care of it.
All right. There won't be any need for executive session.
No, sir.
So, items from the public. Ms. Mauk, you're here to update us a little bit?
Yes, sir. Regarding the voter registration, I'm Elaine Mauk, County Clerk. We've been diligent down there, and thanks to all the computer expertise that we have in Berkeley County, in spite of all the stuff with Civis, we are pulling things together. We'll be having a final poll on the Alpha List as of Monday, going to press on Tuesday, and we'll be mailing out Tuesday afternoon the first batch as far as voter cards. It's been a challenge to meet the criteria. Civis admitted yesterday in a phone conversation that they only agreed to do tweaking of the counties on the updates. They didn't think it was going to be a massive overhaul. They didn't realize that somebody in Berkeley, West Virginia was going to be having a growth issue. So, we've been fighting with all of that. Secondly, we're going to press today with public, with the ballot. We're going to the newspaper. It will be published on the 19th. It'll probably be four pages. It's 13 ballots that have to go out. We've reduced it down, so it's going to be four pages.
Say, there's ways to reduce that down, to keep it down to bare bone minimal.
Well.
They have been working with Gary and Jeff.
Yeah, we've got it down to 13 ballots. Yeah, we're down. Oh, yeah, we've, we've reduced it as much as we can to get it to there. In the past, the one gentleman had done one ballot per page. That's where we got into that. So, we've got it down. There's 12 or 13 ballots, but it was state required, and we can't get around that.
That's fine, just long.
Yeah. So, that should be published somewhere around April 19th to 21st in that, that neighborhood. We're also going to press on the 19th with public testing of the machines for early voting and for the election day, which will be April 21st. So, if you want to come down and see the public test, it'll be on the 21st. Then, the last issue, we have last day for voters to change registration or to file to vote is the 19th. Early voting is the 27th, and poll workers classes are the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And we do need poll workers considerable because of increased, we've, we've used all the ones we have up, and I'm, and everybody that's coming in, we need people to volunteer to do this. So, any questions?
How are you letting the public know about the need for poll workers?
Mark Warner was on WRNR. We put a ad on Facebook. I think we put something in the paper. And, and I've been.
I understand with your added precincts, I know that that's going to be a challenge for you. So, I'm like, get, get the word out.
Yeah, we're trying to get the word out. We, we put out all press releases and everything else on that.
I think that's all public, Paul, underneath the executive committee, too, they have supposed to.
Yeah, that's true.
Can we, can we help some with that, with social media and getting that something put out on social media about that?
See what Mike can do.
The issue is with the situation, Berkeley County is very fortunate. We're 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 as far as Republican, Democrat, and Independent. That's about, that's about the numbers. And what happens is, you've got to have two Republicans, two Democrats, and then that fifth position can be one or the other, depending on the luck of the draw. Well, we have a number of people that are all of a sudden changing from one party to the independent party, which has given us a, that's what's messing us, a lot of it's messing us up because of those changes. But we're moving forward, and if anybody can step forward to be poll worker, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Mauk. All right. We're going to recess and go to the Judicial Center for a tour.
Mike Lang will meet us in the lobby.
Okay. So, we walk across.
I need to make appointments to pick my poles up.
No.